Jim, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Hi, Derek.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? You in the house today?
Hey, Jim. I'm in front of the lectures. I didn't invite you. I didn't call and say my name. I didn't do it, but I probably thought about it.
Yeah, they're there every day.
Well, I guess my people are aware of what's going on. And this is the problem.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you got to hear that.
Better than later. Well.
It's been crazy here. How are you doing? You look beautiful.
Yeah, what's up? There's so much going on today, I didn't get to touch base with you or with Joey. Yes. Okay, very good, thank you.
That's the plan anyway.
Can I talk to Heather?
Oh, okay, I have it.
I have it, yeah. We're on schedule. And then you go. Or so. Let me get your phone right now. Yeah.
Hello.
Hello. Oh, good, fine, everything fine? Oh, you're fine. Why don't you cover where too? Yeah, we got to go back to prison. You, yeah. Oh. Yes, like I was gonna go, what is the room? So, sorry, I, so, that means I agree.
I know, yeah.
It's good to be here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm gonna come. Gotta wait a minute.
Oh, in front of you, okay. No, I don't wanna remember. Sorry, I'm just thinking. Hey, Courtney, oh, you don't do not, you don't have their. Clean your Xbox down with you. Nope. Great.
Ah, thank you.
No, that's a good idea.
I'll introduce things, um, like 957.
My eyes have gotten so bad.
So, thank you very much. Yes, I would like to. So. And then I'll. I'll.
Oh.
How you doing? I'm trying.
I don't even know about it. I don't even know enough about it. Oh, you have to leave it off. I'll have farming here.
No, can, can. Oh, I can. Wait, I said, Helen, Marrow, like that. Yes, yes, I said, I, I said, I would.
That's about where I'm at.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yep. Do I have to move back or for this?
No, no. Well, don't be.
Good, how are you?
Did you know that it's cool?
No, and I can't help.
You better email it again.
How are you?
You know? Yeah, but I can't see it.
Oh, that's great. I'm literally, I have five.
That's a little more enticing. My kids are gone, I had a, um, very handy table. I had a little table that I kept here.
I mean, I'll throw you some.
Oh, the policy. Yeah, yeah.
I charged it. I know my one, you know, I can't.
You're all day. Yes, but she said she didn't have it. But I figured she didn't need it. Yeah, and I did tell Heather and she's like, yeah. Well, right now I'm here and that's my.
Literally, I don't know. I put my house. This is fine.
Yeah. You're all here. Well, you are, yeah. It's, it's, um, yup. I hope it's good. Um, okay.
I'm at seventy percent, so.
Wow. Is there an update on the incident? Yeah, Chris. Yeah, they have a policy. They've had a policy. No, it is, it is. Email, we're using emails, but I never.
Okay, well, I received it.
I asked for the name. Yeah, and, and I asked Heather and Hope to add us to make sure we're added at the. And so where, where is it? We have a hard copy for the file. We will, we have to endorse them. If we're added at the three, so we told them when they were very excited. But we'll add it to the interlocal agreement that is required. Yeah. But, yeah, but I did.
I get somewhere, I get, and then I get really. I almost did. I almost did repeat, and then I was like.
Yes.
But then I sit down, I'm like, thank you.
Yeah.
Like now, like drive by.
I know, which is like, maybe five.
Hey, Chris, can I have a quick question? So, on these items here, which one is the order here? So, the one on the city charter?
Yeah.
That's a public area, so they'll be able to comment.
They're a public area.
Public area, and then what about the collective bargaining? Are they gonna be able to comment on that?
No.
And then what about, uh, 957?
That's public area, so.
So, yeah, and then what about resolution thirty six thirty six?
No.
No. And then what about ninety six? Yeah, and the lab, what about three, thirty six, thirty seven?
Oh, no. There was one.
Because for those who wanted to.
Like, literally, they have a lot like. You're like, oh.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's a property, but it's not mine.
It's yours, yeah.
Not mine.
It's yours, yeah.
I was like, it's in front of me, but I think.
I was gonna bring it this morning, and I forgot. It was good. You gonna check out? Let's get started. Oh, shoot. Making some orders, we stand for this. Let's leave. Let's leave.
Two flags of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Please be seated. Roll call. Here. Paddle, here. Daniel, here. Durbin, here. Eden, here. Ronnie, here.
Um, that was Kelly, I'm here too.
Oh, sorry, Kelly. Here. All right, warrants payable.
Um, I would move to approve warrant payable in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and three dollars and four cents. Small one this week.
Any discussion? Roll call. Paddle, yes. Daniel, yes. Durbin, yes. Eden, yes. Ronnie, yes. Yes. Minutes of October tenth and October twenty fourth. Does anybody object to having them both same time? Is there a motion?
I move to pass the minutes of October tenth and October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
So, second. Any discussion? Roll call. Paddle, yes. Daniel, yes. Durbin, yes. Eden, yes. Ronnie, yes. All right, thanks. Just right in the middle of the chairs, we're painting, right. So, next up is Mayor's Common. Now, if you look in your packet, the application for the annual Christmas stroll is in there. Um, it's pretty standard, um, not a lot of changes. Then, uh, we've got some vacancies. We, we've been interviewing for the next public works director. Jim has some big shoes. So, we hope that we can do a good job filling them. And we also have a vacancy in our planning director position. Courtney's going to be leaving. And we're very sorry about that, but, um, all are best to Courtney, and let's hope we get some good candidates for her position. We are, we've made a conditional offer for an individual for public works director, and, and we'll see how that goes. As you know, it's very expensive to live in Red Lodge, the cost of rent, and that figures into all of our applicant's, um, decisions. So, um, we'll see how it goes, and we'll update you as much as we can. Courtney, uh, do you wanna give us an update on the debris removal?
Yeah, and also, uh, before that, we also have, right now, vacancies for park board, sustainability, um, planning board, which will be more in March, uh, in the urban renewal agency. So, we're, you know, we've put notices out there, put a news update on the website and sent that out in Google Groups. But if you know of anyone who might be interested in serving on any of those committees, um, please send it my way, I can talk to them more about it, or you can send a letter of interest to me. Um, so for the debris removal update, so a couple of weeks, weeks ago, we, I met with DES, Specialized Parts, Army Corps, um, contractors, and a couple of others to go over some of the locations for the resuming the debris removal project. So, earlier this year, about a year ago, they were doing the vegetative debris removal, and now they're ready to move forward with the rock removal. Um, so, we've been trying to work on getting all of the permitting needs in for that, um, and they do plan on resuming this week. And so they will be starting on the south end of town and then working their way. They've got locations of where there's the greatest deposition that they'll be prioritizing throughout the city, um, and the counties as well. So, uh, if anyone wants more information on exactly what's going on there, the locations, I have those materials.
Thank you. Do you have any more updates?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Next up is the airport. Could very well be one of the last airport meetings. We've been talking about it for months, minimum. Um, if you've looked at the packet that you can find online, um, some of you haven't seen a lot of, but, um, every time we have a meeting, we have a packet of all the things we're gonna be talking about on the way. So, in the packet, um, are two summaries I put together. One is, one is the pros and cons of providing the entire northeast quadrant and an additional four acres in the airport boundary. The other is some information that the FAA provides about community involvement and airport planning. I'm including both to you because I wanna make sure the record reflects the position of staff and myself, that this airport boundary and master plan needs a lot more work, and we do not support this plan as it is. The majority of council is poised to pass this boundary as proposed by the airport board. Each of our department heads has warned them of pitfalls. There's no water and sewer plan, the crosswind runway isn't recognized by the FAA, and yet the board is inviting pilots to land there. Council has expressed that if someone in one of the nearby residences is injured or killed, then it's too bad for them, because the airport was there first. I don't think that's going to be a very good argument in court, and I hope we don't find out. The community has not been involved as promised, and now we are going to basically give away our only remaining buildable property for what is basically a hobby airport that serves seventeen Carbon County people. The hangars are also used for personal storage, at least one doesn't even have an airplane in it. How does this benefit Red Lodge? I don't know. The airport board has no plans for the four acres and doesn't use the whole northeast quadrant. The city has zero revenue, and the board is not charged enough to cover the cost of operations and improvements. We all pay a mill on our annual taxes, and the city pays an additional mill, and now we're obliging the last of the buildable land owned by the city for no purpose in particular. The city loses the potential use of probably close to a million dollars of real estate, and for what? The cart program could use a garage, the city needs a new law enforcement center. It would be nice if we had a place for long-term care now that Cedarwood is closed. How about revenue? None of that's possible when council provides that area to the airport. When council asks for more revenue from the people of Red Lodge because of increasing costs, remember this conversation. I read this article a couple of weeks ago about how climate change is going to affect Yellowstone Gateway Communities, and I'll read you a few bits. This is the article, if you get the billings for that, maybe you've read it. This is from, uh, October twenty-seventh. I'll just read you a little bit of it. Failure to address climate change effects could cost Montana's recreation and tourism economy more than eighty-eight hundred jobs and two hundred and sixty-three million dollars in labor earnings by two thousand forty, a recently released report predicted. The most heavily impacted sectors will be glacier and Yellowstone National Park visitation, the study said, with a loss of more than thirty-eight hundred jobs and a hundred and seven million dollars in labor earnings. Wildlife watching, big game hunting, fishing, skiing, and snowmobiling round out the sectors of the recreation economy predicted to take the biggest hit. The study's estimates are built on Montana seeing temperatures rise by six degrees, an increase in precipitation of about two inches a year, with an increase in extreme precipitation events. Unfortunately, those are already occurring, such as the two thousand twenty-two flooding in south central Montana caused by rain on high mountain snow. All familiar with that? Impacts could also be felt by the ski industry if snowfall decreases and winter temperatures warm. Warmer temperatures and drier summers will also increase the likelihood of wildland fires, smoke from which could deter tourism in addition to torching land, forests, and homes. And that's a little relevant to this because, um, the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan utilizes some of the area of the airport to diversify our economy so that we aren't so dependent on tourism. The growth policy states that the entrances should contain mixed-use development. These two policies, both adopted by previous councils, are being ignored. Council says this is a compromise. Not a compromise. I've been going to board meetings for well over a year, and this decision provides the airport with what they originally wanted plus four acres. Council says, but it's for safety. It's not for safety. The airport historically has been separate from the emergency services area since at least the two thousand and ten agreement, and it would remain that way. I don't like baloney being spread as laundry, and honestly, I'm tired of this sort of thing misleading people at Red Lodge. It sounds like the city will be moving forward with an updated economic plan. Why not wait and do this right? Let the economic plan get updated, then finish planning the airport. I'm not against having an airport, and I'm in favor of having a nice one, but the one thing I'm not in favor of is exactly what I've witnessed here. A lot of baloney at a huge cost to taxpayers with a little return. And unfortunately, I don't see any winners. So, those could be my last words on the airport? Don't hold your breath. But, uh, you know, I want the record to reflect my, my thoughts. I know how, I've heard a lot of, well, and Bullock's administration, that's when that happened. I just wanna clear that we are not into it. So, next up is public comment. So, if you'd like to make a public comment, come up to the podium, state your name, state your address, keep to three minutes, there's some guidelines on the wall there, and we'd love to have you come up. We can't respond, but, um, if you want a response, then just give us a call tomorrow morning, we're happy to talk to you about anything you want to talk about, so. Anybody wanna make a comment? We'll also have some comment time during the public hearings for some of these issues, so.
Bill. Bill Bullock, nine hundred, Kindew Avenue, I'm here. Not about the airport. Uh, neighbors, uh, Al Kindew Park, all that. It sounds like everything's being reviewed and everything like that. I just encourage management and staff to expedite as much as we can the rock debris removal along Rock Creek. I think everybody that needs to know is at least aware, thirteenth of December, we're told that our disaster is over, whether it's over or not, but things have to be done by then. Sounds like there's some ongoing issues with some houses and some bases not drying out, um, and they were just asked to. They're asking about the debris removal project, I know that it's, if it has started, they're moving quite a few yards over by Framberg already, they're working their way this way. It needs to happen, there's just more material and water. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Teresa.
Teresa, where's this? Where are we, Broadway? Uh, this is gonna be a bit clunky, I don't have a prepared statement, but it's about resolution number three six three seven, resolution of the city council to approve the attached joint airport board, um, board agreement. We probably won't get a chance since it's not a public hearing, so state it now, that, um, I don't believe it's a good idea to sign the agreement till we know what's in the master plan. We have no idea how that's gonna be settled. Um, I had some comments about the agreement itself. Uh, number one, the joint airport board, and the agreement says that it should be proposed with six members, two city lod, or Red Lodge City Council appointed, two appointed by Bridger City Council, and two by the Board of County Commissioners. I would wonder if it makes sense to state in there as well that none of which shall be elected officials or employed by either municipality or county. Um, that way we have at least a, um, you know, a chance of a, or an avoidance of conflict of interest. And that all meetings shall be conducted in accordance with Broadway rules at the airport. Which airport? Doesn't say which one. Which one? And how will they be noticed? Doesn't say here as well how they would be noticed, or that the public would be made aware of their, um, you know, their times and dates, or the agenda. Um, I don't know how it came to be that the airport board meetings were migrated over and occurred during county commissioner meetings, but that doesn't seem to help anybody. Um, also wondered if, um, number four, powers of the board, build and construct facilities that the, um, joint board may only lease space, area improvements, grant concessions on airports to earmark for purposes, and build and construct facilities pursuant to the master plan, which we have not seen yet. And, at, at least in its final, um, final vision, version. Um, I wondered if we might add pursuant to, to the master plan and in compliance with self-city zoning regulations, whichever ones are applicable, Bridger or Red Lodge, and not county regulation. And then for real property, um, um, in the event of termination, each municipality, let's see if I can remember what I added here, under supervision, controlled the joint board in accordance with the terms of this agreement and within the zoning regulation of either municipality, depending on the location. So. And then on number seven, finances, really, uh, before you sign an agreement like this, it would be wise to understand what is the cost to the city. It's not, not very clear.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Sandy?
You missed me. I'm sorry. Sandy Colling, three oh seven Hagan Avenue South. It's my understanding that the hangars actually pay property taxes up there, so I don't think that the airport is zero to the city. The other thing I'd like to see is that anything built on city-owned land must go through the planning and zoning board and be fully funded prior to starting the project. So, I'd really like to see something like that in there. As to the four acres, which seems to be a sticking point with two of our city council people who today at a meeting said they were gonna vote no on this. Um, I had heard somewhere down the line that the airport wanted that land so that they could have a, a, a different entrance with parking. I don't know if anybody here went to the airport fly-in where people were parked on both sides of Airport Road and walking down the middle of it, 'cause there's no public parking, and that's a very busy street. So, the suggestion of doing a traffic study could probably be done pretty quickly from anybody in here rather than spending money on a traffic study. I think a traffic study is pretty obvious, most people know that it's a pretty busy road. And so I think that the two council members should think about that four acres and, um, ask the planning, ask the airport board what else they might use for it. I personally can't imagine any use for it with no sewer, no water.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else? Is there anyone online? Oh, wait, just wait a minute, we got. We got...
Heather Quinn, White Street. I am not super prepared, so this is going to be a little messy because I have a lot to say. First of all, I would just like to address the council in regards to, I don't think that this was meant to be a full-time job. And I kind of, I'm sorry for all the things that you are all going through, all the committee meetings, the after-hours of research to support the decisions that are being made, and then creating and amending. I really wasn't aware that our town was this messed up, that you guys have to live so much of your time at city hall, taking calls, emails, after all those hours, and just the stress of it all. And I feel bad about that for you all. I truly do. It's been a lot for you. After looking through a couple of surveys that have been taken through the last couple of years, I see that one, on one of them, there appear to be about 83 responses. After that, about 55 responded to the actual survey, with most of the questions only being answered by eight to 15 people that responded to the question. The survey was geared more towards events. The short-term survey was very specific, short-term rentals was very specific, and there was about 930 respondents. However, some of the committee felt it should be whittled down, so they removed a few respondents, and any owners out of town, and owners out of state were also removed. And I do believe that they also removed business owners who lived out of town. This still did not give them the results they wanted. However, it brought them closer to what they wanted, and the group continued. This also gave them more time to recoup, recruit naysayers. They also used the community foundation group to put the kindling together and light the fire before it was ever received at council for the recommendation of a special committee. The rest is history. They stirred the pot and made this perceived to be a huge problem. No workforce housing, no affordable housing, unruly people taking up parking. Most homes in vacation rentals actually do have off-street parking. So, I ask if the community foundation did not exist and if these little groups were not formed, would our town be, where would our town be without them? The group itself does see Terry Wilson capitalized on our market and sold her home after her business failed and moved. Not sure whatever happened to Jacob, who lived here less than a year when he was given a seat on the table at the committee. Gabby was here about a year and moved before this group even made a final decision. She did come in on Skype once and a while. Julie went here during COVID, and I believe Roy, who had just recently built his home on the golf course, was fairly new to our community. Jen of AAA Red Lodge Rentals was also a part of the committee and a longtime resident. Bottom line, how many even brought this up? A handful, maybe a nuisance before the community foundation decided it was a potential avenue for affordable and workforce housing. How many people went to the city? How many people went to the mayor of the city and their city representatives to say, get rid of these rentals? I would say it would be less than five, if any. How many went to the same people to complain about the rally? I would say very few. However, every year, those who will complain about the rally, it starts, and every year there's still a rally after 29 years. How many people every year complain about the fireworks? And again, every year, we still have fireworks. How many people complained about the car show, taking up parking on the street? But yet, every year, we have a car show. How many complained about the rodeo parade? Every year, we have a parade. I really want to get to the airport, you guys. And the signage. Where's my airport? I'm not sure where the airport is.
Everybody got to wrap it up.
How many people complained about the land that the airport was using, the planes flying overhead, entertaining us? Not until now. How many people complained about the art in the parks, the farmer's market? Some things do get annoyed. Now it's complaining about the signage. Where is my airport?
Okay, Evan, you want to submit your comment?
You know what? I'll bring it back up.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the room physically present who would like to speak? So, is there anyone? Do we have one person online? We switched to Zoom from GoToMeeting if for any of you who pay attention to something. Does anybody online have anything they'd like to contribute as far as the public comment? In general? All right, last call for public comment. Anybody want to make a public comment? And both have more public comments during the public hearing that are all listed on the agenda. So, sounds like we're done. All right. Done with public comments. Thank you all. I appreciate your thoughts. Next up is Danny Gritty. We will start with the next thing, canceling the last council meeting in the year, which is kind of a tradition. Chris, you want to turn it off?
Tradition. Yeah, the meeting is on December 26th, day after Christmas, so I would move that we cancel that meeting.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Saddle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Wonderful. You have an agreement. Love it. Next up is ordinance 967. Jen, you want to answer that?
Yeah, it is me. Okay. So, this ordinance would propose to the voters, we've had a discussion on it once before, it hasn't changed since last time we thought. So, this ordinance would propose to the voters an amendment to the city charter clarifying mayoral appointments. Our current city charter states that the mayor makes all board and committee appointments with consent of council. However, Montana statute specifically dictates appointment of the planning board and the renewal agency, the urban renewal agency, which is in conflict with that language. So, the planning board had passed a resolution earlier this year asking council to move forward with the steps necessary to amend the charter language so that it complies with Montana code and their bylaws. And so, this, that next step, and it's a vote to put the language to, on the ballot in November of 2024.
Thank you. Yep. Well, for the public here, it's very sad. Our motion's first. All right. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to make a comment about that, please approach the podium, say more than twice.
Small Montana.
Almost there.
Biggest game of the year.
So, who had a second? Can you turn that one? Okay. I'm not hearing that anybody wants to make a comment on this issue. It's understandable. Kind of complicated. So, last call for public comment. Yes, Sandy?
Very brief. I just... Sandy Colling, 307 Hagan Avenue South. I don't think that this city council should be telling the next city council what to do, and that's what this resolution does. It's a great suggestion, and I think it would be considered by the next city council, but I don't think there should be a resolution stating that. That's my opinion, is that there is a change of guard here, and because there's a change of guard, this city council shouldn't try to manage the next city council.
And Sandy? Any more comments? Last call. Heather?
Sorry. Heather, White Street, Red Lodge. I just, again, about the airport, how many of us understand what happens if we do not have an airport close by? I know, and we're talking about size as well, but...
Can you make that during the airport comment?
Can I talk about something else?
You can talk about ordinance 967 to clarify mayoral appointments. All right. All right. So, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. They have a motion.
I move to through ordinance number 967, an ordinance in the city of Red Lodge, Montana, to submit to the voters a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Red Lodge to clarify mayoral appointments and board members.
Is there a second?
Any second.
Is there a discussion? Any discussion?
So, maybe just some clarification. This is just to put, basically, the proposal to change the verbiage on...
Our city charter.
On the charter.
Right.
But it's up to...
It's up to the voters.
Right.
Voters will see this proposed change at the bottom. The mayor shall appoint with consent of council all members of board except when board representation and membership is explicitly outlined within Montana code annotated. That's the, the bolded part.
Okay.
Is the change. And they can vote for amending the charter with that change or against amending the charter with that change.
No.
And honey, we're asked to get, do, you know, ask the electorates for that change, but it didn't happen in November because our, our language is not true.
Okay, got it. That's where we're at.
So, we're asking, we're moving forward now so that if there are changes to that need to happen, we can come back to the table and fix it before it's in place.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to comment. I would normally agree with Sandy on this. The one thing, since this is going to go out to the voters, who I believe are going to weigh in on this, I do support it, and I think that we've had enough occasions this past year that we've been bit by this, that it's something that we need to correct so that the next city council, when they come in, don't face the same challenges. So, I support this.
Any more comments? Question? Discussion? Roll call.
Saddle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly. Kelly, can you introduce the collective bargaining agreement with the Red Lodge Police Department as a peraction?
Sure. Yes, I can. So, last time, we talked about this, and there was only one, we tabled it because there was a question about the reimbursement for travel mileage and hotels and whether that was state or federal rates. And the way I understand it from the email that I saw from the mayor, that it is federal rates. Is that correct?
They're, they're federal rates broken down by state, and if you just put in Montana, and I added the word Montana, and the union down said that that, that would work for them, and so now there should be no more confusion.
Great.
Any further questions?
Right. So, can I get a motion? Or I'd like to make a motion to approve the Red Lodge Police Union contract.
Oh, sorry. But we need to get this clarified, this business online, but until then, you can't make a motion, but thank you for your thoughts. Would anybody else like to make a motion? To approve the collective bargaining agreement for the Red Lodge Police Department?
I'll go ahead. I don't have one in front of me. I was going to read it, but I don't have it.
Yeah, I've got to find my time here.
Yes, I was about to.
I... Put forth collective bargaining agreement between City of Red Lodge and the Red Lodge Police Department. I think motion to approve. What am I trying to say?
To approve.
To approve the collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions about...
I just had one question. Has, just to verify that, has our city attorney reviewed the agreement?
I'll let him answer that.
Okay. Before we...
Mayor, may I ask the city council? I have reviewed the agreement for legality purposes to the very end, or at the very end, and there's no issues legally applied. So, the city should not have an issue with entering into this agreement.
There's a question.
Yes.
So, I have a question, just maybe a high-level question I'd like to ask. And so, going into this collective bargaining, what was the city, what were the goals of the city going into this, and what did we ask for? And then what did we get and what did we not get?
There, the last meeting had a redlined agreement of the things that were changed. It's also in here. Is it in here too?
Yeah.
The last page is 58, and the first page is... 32. One of the biggest, the thing that takes up the most space is the grievance procedure, and I myself don't have any preferences. I mean, you know, they're all basically the same. They have tiers of, I think, I think we talked about this last time. They have tiers of procedures and different groups of people when there's an incident that happens. Another one was a few small changes to the drug policy because if they test positive, they'd like to have an opportunity to have it reviewed by a third party because, because they're in contact with different drugs in their work, and they don't want to be found, they don't want to be accused of using drugs when they're finding drugs. There was another, another issue with the, they previously had their records expunged if, if they made a request after a year and a half, and that's not something that we do for any other employees, and so we agreed that that would be removed. Let me scroll through and I'll... There was a few shift provisions that we do anyway, and we, we just put them in writing. I left a lot of that up to the chief for if that works for the department. You know, a contract is a meeting of the minds, and that's why it's so good to have these written out. The airport thing has been a problem, and, and I'll tell you, whether you like, whether you like what's going to happen today or not, at least we have a boundary, because not having a boundary is what created a lot of the problems. So, it's really good to have these contracts and have a meeting of the minds. And so, we did go through each of these provisions, and we have a meeting of the minds. So, you know, shift bidding, that, it went to three months instead of four. Do I care? No, I don't care. I'm not an officer, and I'm not the chief. If, if it works for them, it works for me. I respect both of their opinions and the, it doesn't affect the city at all. There's a night shift differential that we added. Most of the jobs that I've worked at, you get paid a little more if you work the night shift. It's more difficult to do your banking by daycare, and, and I think that's a fair provision. Because we don't have any money in the city, we weren't able to give them a raise to keep up with the, the cost of living, which, you know, it, it doesn't continue to go back to the airport, because why can we afford one thing and we can't afford to pay our people with the cost of living wage increases? And so, we weren't able to give them that. I think we gave them $1.50 an hour. But we, we were able to do the night shift differential. We changed the fitness program. Previously, we were allowing $50 credit, I think, when they, when they go to the gym, but a lot of the officers, they do other physical activity, things like jujitsu or, you know, if they, I mean, if they want to do something different, I'm not going to make them go to the gym, and, and I left that up to the chief to approve that program. So, that was another one of the changes. Drug test. And because we were only able to give them $1.50 an hour, we agreed to have this ready to pay reviewed again, which gives council time to find the money to pay them. We have to pay our employees. It's not fair to not give them cost of living increases. That's just not, that's not ethical. I mean, as an employer, it's not okay. Things cost you money, and, and they're entitled to the cost of living. So... Oh, so, so we are going to have a shorter period between that, this contract and the next contract, and so, you know, and the panel from the union came and made a presentation and said, you know, look, we're going to, we're going to accept this now, but we want it addressed by council next year. And so, you know, she made her plea, and we are going to have to address it. The community wants 24/7 police coverage. I don't know how many of you went to the provocative issues where we talked about drugs in Carver County, but, you know, all the things you read about in... you know, all the things you read about in Billings leaked into Red Lodge, there's a lot of drugs, there's a lot of fentanyl, there's a lot of methamphetamine, there's a lot of shootings, okay, so, it's, it's pretty unfair that we want to keep our 24/7 coverage, it costs us a lot more money when we don't pay them, because then we have to pay overtime to the people who are still working, and then we have to pay to train them, I mean, it, it's a lot more expensive to not pay them than it is to pay them, so, you know, stay tuned to the issue, and if, if you want to talk about this next year, when we're going back over the details, we have this union and we have the public employee union, and we try to keep them about separate, you know, we have terms of equity, so, do you have any questions?
Yeah, actually I do, so I want to go back to the issue of their pay, I'm not sure if I understand this correctly, but are the police department, are they on a different pay scale than the rest of the city employees?
Yeah, they're two separate.
Okay, and so, 'cause I was a little bit confused at the last one, that's why I'm asking, so when they got their dollar fifty raise, an hour raise, was that strictly for the police officers, or was that across the board for, for grade twelves, or whatever they're in?
It was a dollar fifty for both pay matrices, but it was a dollar fifty added into the entry level of those pay matrix, so, the entry level is what changed the dollar fifty, so depending on your years, that could have increased, it just depends on where you're at with the amount of pay.
So, I guess, so my question is, so why did we do it for, if, if it's the police officers that are underpaid, and we need to bump their salary up, why was that also apply, was that dollar fifty also applied to the other pay scale?
The other, the other union also was negotiating for, and the dollar fifty was done for them, before the police was done.
Okay, so the decision was made to give them across the board a dollar fifty, but that could have been a dollar fifty that maybe could have gone to the police, okay, all right, that's kind of interesting.
I don't think, I don't think, we couldn't have taken it from one union.
Well, I'm not saying that, but you have one pot of money, and I know we've had this discussion for a couple of years, that the police department, that officers are underpaid, they're putting their life on the line, so I guess I'm just kind of under, I'm trying to understand, since it never came either to the Public Safety Committee, which I'm on, or I never heard from city council, when we were talking about these pay raises, the trade offs of giving the police three dollars an hour increase versus splitting it between the two unions, so I'm just trying to understand, who made those decisions, and what was weighed?
Oh, I think it was basically to give, to be fair, to both groups, to all the employees.
Okay, so you're putting the police in the same category as the other grade twelve?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I mean, you know, they're two different unions, but, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna be telling one person that their job is not, I mean, there's a lot of danger in being a public worker, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to be judging, that's why we have unions, they, they're welcome to do that, we have different grievance procedures, you don't, you seem to have some questions?
No, I'm perplexed at that, I'm perplexed at your answer, but go ahead. You have a question I have, I have one more question for you, since, again, you know, this never came before public safety, I, I believe that you had a union rep that came in and talked to admin and finance, we were never given the same courtesy, but that aside, I want to know that if this doesn't go through, will the police officers still have their raise, is that already in effect?
I, you know, I haven't, I haven't...
It's a separate union, it's a fully...
But what I'm asking is...
If you guys, if you guys let me forward with this contract tonight, they, they don't differ.
So right now they're back...
Retroactive, back to July.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because I wouldn't want them to suffer for anything on our part, okay.
Any more questions or comments or discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is, Jen is gonna talk about ordinance 957 to amend the municipal code pertaining to land use, if you could be so kind as to introduce it, and then Al would like to pick up he words, and then we'll go back to the motion.
Perfect, okay, so ordinance 957 is to amend the municipal code pertaining to public land use, this is the first reading, it was tabled last time, since then, the planning board has met, and the chair has communicated with the mayor and council, and that communication is in our packet. Planning board also met last week and voted to ask council to remove exhibit B and C from their recommendations tonight, and move forward with the rest. What remains for our consideration and vote tonight are exhibit A, section 4.4.20, new specific standards regarding short-term rentals, and article 4.6.0, outdoor advertising for the zoning regulations. These recommendations have been made based on research from the planning board and are consistent with the Red Lodge growth policy, favor duly notified, public meetings, and much discussion on both of these items, and passed with more than a majority vote. So Al is here as the planning board chair, to provide counsel with a planning summary of those changes and their reasoning behind them.
Introduction.
Thanks very much, Al. Al is the chair of the planning board.
Al Boomer, 302 Kaino, and, uh, chair of the planning board. As mayor and councilman, I hope tonight I can help us through this. First, I want to address the 4.6.0, the outdoor advertising, which was forwarded to the council from the planning board after a lot of discussion, seven zero. What drove the recommendations was basically a couple of things. Number one was the historic character of downtown Red Lodge, that was a very much in front of our discussion. The other thing was the dark sky initiative that's been worked on for several years, the 1986 revitalization plan, and the 2020 growth policy, we tried to stay in concert with all those. There was a lot of discussion about the impact of illumination. We wanted to align the neon signs with historic character, the size and scale of existing signs. Was also some discussion about faux neon, which we recommended place in some areas. Exempted in our recommendation are, of course, the historical Roman Theater, Red Lodge Cafe, and the Candium Emporium. Again, the planning board looked at type, location, size, and brightness, and tried to stay consistent with the historic overlay, as well as big sky, dark fat initiative, and the revitalization plan. So the bigger question now, the resolution 202301 amended, which is the STR issue. I've written a, the council and the mayor a letter from the planning board dated October 27th, I hope you've taken the time to read that, I will not go through all those points that we made there. Following the recommendations from the STR land use committee, the planning board began their review of zoning regulations, I've gotta scratch my notes, sorry, and the allowed use table. The initial recommendations were made in March, and we do now have a subcommittee that's reviewing the overall allowed use table, which you all have in your packet, this is an existing allowed use table. We need to do a better job of reviewing and explaining current zoning policies and allowed use tables, we need to reevaluate, and we need to think again. We need to do a better job of reviewing and explaining the current zoning policies. There are inconsistencies in fusion with the applicable definitions, such as, we interchange property, unit, and dwelling in our language, and often they contradict each other, we need to clarify that. Secondly, we need to clarify the application of principal use versus proper, versus accessory use, versus conditional use, again, this seems to be a misunderstanding. The grandfather policy needs to be better defined and clarified. The planning board has listened carefully to the legitimate questions and various statements made throughout this response period. How are we gonna enforce the regulations? That's a big question we get often. Do zoning regulations negatively impact property value? Or do zoning regulations enhance property value? We haven't answered that question sufficiently. Does the imposed allowed use table for STRs eliminate or reduce investment opportunities for the property managers? We haven't addressed that properly. Are we discouraging non-resident property management? Are we forcing STRs into specific areas of the city? Are we treating STR categories differently under the cap? These are all legitimate questions that I don't think we've answered properly. Do we need to better define accessory use for STRs? Again, the planning board discussed this, but in the recent meetings, we've heard comments and questions that we have not adequately addressed. In January, there will be a significant change in administration, we'll have a new mayor, we'll have two new councilmen, we'll have a director of planning, and we do anticipate some turnover on the planning board. Maybe these new people need to have a voice in what we're doing. With all this considered, before making recommendations to refer exhibit B and C back to the planning board, we also recognize that due to the pending holidays, we're only gonna meet once between now and the end of the year. I'm hopeful that if you refer it back to us, that we can get some responses to these legitimate questions by February, but hopefully no later than March. Again, I hesitate to give you a deadline because of the complexity of the issues. Finally, I mentioned a couple of councilmen, that I think it would be proper that sometime in January, that the council and the planning board have a work session to review the purposes and objectives of zoning, because there seems to be some confusion, and we need to clarify that. Do the current zoning policies and the relationship, and we need to review the current zoning policies and the relationship to our current growth policy. We need to continue to give historical perspective to the reasoning behind what we do. While addressing zoning issues, the planning board has tried to be objective, fair, and responsive to the various concerns. We are searching for consensus in a very complex and sometimes emotional issue. We need to do a better job of communicating and justifying our recommendations, so I'm asking you to please refer those two articles back to us, so that we can legitimately address these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
So with that, we will open the public hearing. Would you like to make a comment? Please approach the podium, say more than five.
Is that Chelsea?
Oh, no. Sure is, who would have thought? Chelsea, 20803 Mark Hauser, I just truly want to commend Al and the planning board for taking that second look, and really recognizing the gravity of what is being proposed, and listening to the community members on what we have been trying to say for a while, and taking that at heart, and really wanting to bring it back, to not just fully understand it, but to fully communicate the votes. So I really just want to second that, and really hope that you take that into consideration tonight, especially with moving forward with the master plan and the downtown plan, I feel a lot of these issues, like specifically with lighting or signage, with STRs and zoning specifically, I think these all can work in concert together, and it'd be wonderful to see that happen, and moving into the new year, I love the idea of a work session, and if not one, but many, like, excuse me, I think that would be absolutely fabulous, but again, really want to commend the planning board and Al for that, and really hope that you take that into consideration moving forward.
Thank you, Chelsea.
I've got my scratch.
Jen? Jen Cap, Dean North plant.
Yeah, I was a little concerned when I sat way back there, if I could get up here and put you on, you all know that I will. I also want to commend the planning board for making the recommendation that we take more time to study the, any adjustments to the allowed use table. I also want to clarify that, because I've heard in conversation that, you know, the STR advisory committee, which I served on, we did make a recommendation that the allowed use tables be looked at by the planning board with STRs in, in the discussion, but it was not specific to further restrictions through the allowed use tables that would pertain strictly to STRs. So we did pass the recommendation on that the planning board take a look, it was the very last meeting of the short-term real advisory committee, and it was given very little time or discussion, but we did agree that it should be looked at, but there was no indication that that, that review meant that there would be further restrictions against STRs developed within the allowed use table, that was not the recommendation of the short-term real advisory committee. The short-term real advisory committee, the most urgent action I felt that they came out of that committee and was passed on to the planning board and council, was the cap, was the threshold, and that's been passed, so it's a done deal, until the next review. So we're all abiding by that ordinance, and I think it would be wise to allow that ordinance to sit and sink in before we explore any further restrictions to STRs in the city limits.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. We got a room full of people.
I, I got one more thing that I forgot to say.
You're still on your three minutes.
Yeah, can I really go back? The one thing I would say, is just specifically talking about those definitions, in exhibit A, item seven, it talks about principal and accessory use and defines those and directly relates to the allowed use table, I would just like to hope that that can be removed in further discussion, or change that when moving forward, that, if that makes sense. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Heather?
Good evening, George Warmer, 2210 11th Street West, Billings, I'm the broker-owner of Coal Bankers, the brokers, we have a office here. We did email out a letter to city council yesterday, my understanding is that it got here in time for you to review, but may not be part of the written agenda till next week. It was signed on behalf of our office, Pure West Christie's, Berkshire Hathaway, Montana Realty Company, Coal Creek Realty, and Seymour. This addresses specifically exterior-facing window advertising in 4.6.20. You know, first and foremost, I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the time and energy that you all invest, I too sit on boards in Billings, and I'm always amazed at how much time it takes, and I appreciate you taking the time to look at this specifically. We're a bit at a loss as to the rationale that exterior-facing signs were added, seems like an afterthought to this ordinance, we're not sure exactly how that impacts the safety of our community, how it impacts dark skies, frankly, if we were going to ask us to dim our little interior signs, we might as well dim all of Broadway to affect dark skies, I don't think that's legitimate rationale, and in talking to Al, and some great points there, it seems like some of the discussions around historic character and dark skies, and in neither one of those cases do we see the targeting specifically, if this is written, towards real estate companies. the targeting specifically, if this is written, towards real estate companies. It's really a rationale. I think if we're going to start going down the road of regulating what retailers can put inside their displays, inside their buildings, it's a slippery slope. So I appreciate your attention to this. I'm sure there'll be others that talk on this point, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Heather.
But you're not going to talk about the report?
I'm not going to talk to you. Yeah. See, I've got to try that new mushroom coffee, let me tell you. Anyway, I just wanted to talk about the exterior-facing signage in the windows. Again, these signs have been there a long time. We've had neon signs, different types of lighting, little dancing lamp signs, whatever. And all of a sudden, it's become a problem. Somebody complained, and now it's grown to three people. And I'm just asking, when will this stop?
Thank you, Heather. Marcela.
The frequent visitors. Marcelo Manuel, I have a business at 5 North Broadway at Coldwell Banker. I'd like you to think about the communities that you like to visit. So when you go on vacation and you go into a community, it is those inviting downtowns that make you want to go to those communities. And part of what makes a downtown inviting to me is something that is active, vibrant, well-lit, looks like there's things going on. Those are the communities that we gravitate to. If you want examples of towns that don't have that, that aren't lit very well, you don't stop in those communities. And it's my fear that in making the downtown lighting less, we become less vibrant. People lose incentive to go downtown, to take a walk down Broadway after dinner, to look in the shops and see what the shops have to offer. I think there's public safety at risk. We all know the sidewalks in Red Lodge are, I don't know if I'd say necessarily, always dangerous, but there are definitely issues with the sidewalks in town. And then in the winter, you add ice on the sidewalk. And so any amount of additional lighting on the street sometimes can be very welcome. I left the planning board meeting the other night, and oh my goodness, it was really dark getting over to the courthouse building. And so some of the issues around lighting, we should be taking safety into consideration It wasn't till that long ago that we had a police officer come by our office, and it's probably been a couple of years, but last police chief probably, and asked us in the office to please leave the lights on in our office at night, because they wanted to be able to see what was going on inside. And they thought that it helped on the sidewalk for us to have our lights on in our business. And so clearly, there's some public safety issue there. You know, it's kind of wayfinding for tourists too. So if you're a tourist in town, and we have to admit, we're a tourism town, if you aren't familiar with the community and the street is dark, it's hard to find your way around. You don't navigate around town well. And I think there's also a sense of community that you lose when it's dark downtown. If you go downtown for dinner and you're walking home and you pass the one on the street, if it's not well-lit, you stop and talk to that person, even though you might know them. You may not. And I really feel like there's a place for dark skies, but downtown in a commercial district is not the place to have concerns about dark skies. Downtown should be lively, vibrant, active, welcoming to tourists, and you don't get that when you have dark businesses. And I have to say, as George pointed out, I really feel like the real estate community was specifically targeted with it. And it's a little offensive to me, a longtime member of this community who has contributed hours and hours to different community organizations here that we'd be single now. So thank you.
Thank you for talking. Anybody else? Sandy?
Of course. After spending 12 years on the planning and zoning board, I greatly appreciate everything that they do for free, not that you guys are overpaid, to say the least. The planning board, there was a problem that arose on short-term rentals way back with James, on a state level, that short-term rentals were not paying their bed tax. So this planning board started changing some of the rules, and the city bought the software so we could find out who is a short-term rental and make sure that they're licensed or regulated as the new terminology is. So there was a problem, and there was a fix. The administrative appointment of the short-term rental committee did a survey. They had 966 respondents. Are short-term rentals a problem? Seventy-nine percent said no. But instead of believing that survey, we spent the last year and a half adding more and more short-term rental restrictions. And this is crazy, when everybody in this room and in this town knows that the real problem is the lack of workforce housing. If we had spent the last year and a half on workforce housing, we might actually be somewhere. So I think that this further restriction on short-term rentals just really needs to stop, because there wasn't a problem. I don't mind having a problem and solving it. Now for the lighting, the exterior, the new definition of including exterior-facing window advertising, what's the problem? That's my real question, is what's the problem to solve? Is it actually contributing? Is it skyward bound, all that light that's facing out? There isn't a problem, so why are we going to this trouble to restrict indoor advertising? And where does it stop? This is like one foot in, so everybody can hang their interior advertising a foot and one inch in. This is silly. Stay out of the windows of our businesses. This is a tourist town. Our businesses need to thrive, and they can't thrive without advertising the wares in the windows. And whether or not it's a 25% use of the window, that's going to be very hard to figure out, whether that little spot, and that little spot, and that little spot, all adds up to 25% of the window, because that's one of the restrictions from here too. And yes, I agree, real estate has been attacked in this, and the reason why is because now we're trying to make our listings visible at night. It's not like it's bright, shining out or shining up. Anybody who's walked down Broadway has seen them day and night. So all I can say is, what was the problem that we're trying to fix?
Sandy.
Hello?
Hey, this is the council. Dan Smith, 1900 Bessebrook Laurel. Beth and I own Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, Lowbourn Real Estate here in town, and I would like to agree with my colleague, George, Marcela, and others, that, you know, the external-facing signs are minimal as far as light goes. We did a safety study at our offices, and it was recommended that we leave lights on in the offices by the police department. So that's in Billings, that's in Red Lodge, and our Columbus office. So I respectfully ask that that be removed, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dennis Sturks, I live in Billings, but I got a rental at 1229 Lazium Circle. I really want to applaud the planning board. I was here last week, listening to all the debates on the SDRs, and I would hope the council takes their recommendation to table this motion or table that and do more research on it. I just wanted to come and put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see a lot of movement. Is there anybody online who would like to speak on this issue? All right. Ready to do one last call? Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak on this issue? Right. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, especially people who don't typically come. Very nice. Get some freshness. So is there a motion?
I think it's a discussion. So I will approve ordinance 957, First Amendment, and then the code pertaining to misuse.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. All right, discussion. But, you know, we can go around robin, or we can just be polite, and I can call on people, and if I don't look your direction, like Carrie sometimes, we'll just sort out that she would like to speak.
So I can be recognized.
Yeah, because then I'll move over there. I'll go over there.
Well, I think I needed to move to approve and then.
Yeah.
So I have two amendments to suggest, so I'm the liaison for planning board. And so I would move to amend, to review Exhibits B and C as per the recommendation of the planning board. I would also like to just identify that colloquially, we have been accidentally using the term business license and business registration interchangeably, and that is not correct. And we need to change that. So basically, wherever the ordinance says or refers to a business license, it needs to say registration, and that is in compliance with Ordinance 907 from 2014, where we had set business registration to use. So it is a semantics issue, but it needs to be addressed before it's approved. And those are the two amendments that I would like to make.
Do you want them separated, or just all together?
All together. Removing that it's B and C as per recommendation from the planning board, and anywhere it says license or refers to a business license, we need to change that language to say registration. And I asked Courtney just to make sure that is what we talked about.
Yeah, and I would just say any license, registration, because sometimes it's not really great. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on these, on this amendment?
Okay, just to clarify, the B and C were the?
Use table? The use table on the overlay district.
Okay.
All right, are we going to have any more discussion on this, or should we go to a roll call? And this would be for the amendment?
Just for the amendment.
Just for the amendment.
Okay. So we're going to have another conversation about flipping this back to?
Yeah.
With no further discussion, I'm not feeling like to discuss. Roll call. Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
E?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. So back to the original motion to pass this ordinance.
I'll speak up. I would agree with Al that this needs to go back to planning board. I don't understand a lot of it. I would welcome that work session to learn more about all of that. And at the same time, I appreciate all of you who stood up and gave your opinions on some of the things that were in there that we can work on. So thank you for that.
I'd like some clarification, because the vote that planning board made was to remove Exhibit B and C and to move forward with the rest. So Exhibit A, including all the short-term language and the lighting ordinance, that was the vote, as I recall, and Al and Courtney were both there nodding. So just to be clear, the request from planning board wasn't to take the whole thing back, it was for us to move forward and vote on Exhibit A and on the lighting ordinance tonight and to take back Exhibit B and C.
That's true. Outdoor advertising.
Outdoor, I think, thank you, yes.
And so B and C are out, because?
Right. So we are voting on what is in the, as it stands right now, the motion with the second is everything that is currently in the packet with the exception of Exhibit B and C. That's what we should be discussing.
And Courtney, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's the, we would like city councils to move forward with the zoning language amendment, especially the zoning language for short-term rentals. A lot of that came out of that short-term rental committee, then was amended, and so you have line item changes of what was originally from the 2018, when it's a short-term rental zoning was adopted in 2018, and then what was ultimately changed at the planning board. But a lot of that language also came out of work with the short-term rental committee put together. And then the outdoor advertising, we really tried to clarify, there's, you know, we didn't address internally illuminated signs outside of historic districts, and so that's been kind of challenging for me, when I get an internally illuminated sign in a community entrance, and we didn't have anything in our outdoor advertising. And then the other, you know, the question was, what problem is being addressed? So there's, you know, this wasn't in response to real estate signage in windows, this was in response to the increase in a loophole that business owners were saying in our regulations, that they could have signs that would be in violation of our outdoor advertising if they just put it on the inside of the windows. And so we've been seeing a big increase in what planning board doesn't consider as part of our historic character of our downtown, has identified as historic character of our downtown in the revitalization plan, and so the intent was to address this loophole that has been getting kind of out of hand over the last few years.
Any further discussion?
I think I'll just chime in and say that as sitting on the planning board for multiple months, looking at both of these issues, I respect the process of the planning board, and every single person on that planning board has not only had opportunity, but specifically had input. We go around and collect input from every single person before we move on, and that's line item by line item, and it sometimes makes for a tedious night, but it ensures that the residents, all the residents of Red Lodge are represented in that process. And I, based on sitting there through those meetings and knowing the care that was taken, and also the expertise on the planning board, some of those folks have been there for a while in making these suggestions, I feel confident that that process produces results good for Red Lodge.
So I'm not hearing a lot of discussion.
So we're voting yes to keep it with the amendment?
We're voting on the ordinance as presented with the removal of the SDR allowed use table, Exhibit B, and the urban renewal district overlay map. The rest, Dan?
Thank you for asking for clarification.
Sorry.
No, it is complicated. It's really great to hear.
My point, I got a little, I got a little backwards on it.
And if you have, if you're not sure, other people are sure. Any more comments or discussion?
I honestly don't feel prepared to vote on this. Thirty pages of things that I was hoping to get with Al and the planning board to learn more about it. And I'm sorry, but I haven't had the benefit of being able to go to those meetings, so.
Would you like to make a motion to table?
Sure, I can, can I do that right now? Or do we have to vote on this one first?
No, I think we can vote.
We would, I think, I might want to vote.
Okay, I will make a motion to table, Ordinance 957. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
The motion to table, Al.
Is there a second on this motion?
I mean, I feel like if we're not all ready to vote on it, then we shouldn't vote on it. Also, Kelly's not here. So I'll second it.
Any discussion on this motion? Any discussion on this motion? I don't know if Courtney or Al have anything?
Well, I just don't know what board you want from the planning board to.
I think she just wants time to digest it in the understanding light of the comments that were made tonight. Is that correct?
Okay. Kelly's going to be at the next meeting.
Kelly, are you going to be at the next meeting? Present?
Yes, I'm here right now, but yes, I'll be in the room next time.
Al, do you want to add something?
Yeah, if I might. In that letter I wrote to you of October 27, in that I specifically itemized the regulations that were part of exhibit A in terms of the number of nights, the sound, the noise, the fire department regulations, the parking issues and all that. And those were pretty standard, and that's fundamentally what's in exhibit A. So the explanation, I think, has to be where we have to do our homework is in B and C. So I mean, it's your prerogative to delay it, but I don't know how we can further explain A. It's pretty straightforward. B and C gets a little muddled.
Okay, any more conversations at the table? And then we'll go to roll call on the motion.
Can I just say, like, if you have questions as you read through, reach out to me. We can do a little one-on-one crash course of, you know, or go through examples or, you know, whatever it is, see if I can help clarify anything as you are reading it if something is confusing. I think Al would probably offer the same as well if you need to clarify.
Okay, I'll take you up on that. I'm not very familiar with planning and zoning. Happy to do that.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call on the motion to table.
Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
No.
Durbin?
No.
He?
Yes.
Ronnie?
No.
So the motion fails. Okay, back to the main motion, and is there any further discussion on that? All right, then roll call.
Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
No.
Durbin?
No.
He?
Can I have same?
Yes. Ronnie?
I'm not staying because of the signs directly affecting my decision.
So that fails all votes. Public Works Resolution 3636 to adopt the City of Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan is up for action. Who would like to introduce this from the Public Works Committee?
I don't want to introduce one. Yeah, so do I need to move? Okay. Resolution number 3636, a resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge to adopt the City of Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan. Whereas that the City Council adopts the updated City of Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan referenced as exhibit A, that implementation of the City of Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan shall be conducted by the Red Lodge City Council and Sustainability Board whose composition shall be determined by the council that the City of Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan be considered for inclusion in the growth policy when the growth policy process is open for update and modification. I did make a motion, oh, sorry, I make a motion to pass the resolution number 3636. And I second it. I'm excited.
All right, we have a motion that is contested to approve, resolution 3636. Any discussion?
Apparently we do need to amend the resolution because in now therefore being resolved number two, we have something protected by the Red Lodge City Council Sustainability Board, whose composition shall be determined by the council. And we can't do that, correct? Should say mayor with consent of council?
I agree with your charter.
So I can move to change that before we vote on this resolution. To correct the language of number two.
So it's said a mayor with consent of council. Is there a motion to?
Yes, I move to change the wording, sorry.
I second.
All right, any?
To be in line with our charter.
Discussion further on that item? Would you like to go straight to roll call? Roll call.
Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
He?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Okay, back to the original motion to pass. Is there any more discussion?
Nice job on it for the energy conservation.
Yeah, the sustainability board worked really hard on that and they've become kind of a fixture at the Public Works Committee and we really appreciated all of their input. So kudos to all of them. There was one question, Courtney, I had for you. We talked today, I believe we're going to get some more data from, I think, Republic on some of the numbers for the tonnage. Were you able to get that?
No, I lack my assistance, so I lack my capacity to follow up with those. There's four different recycling entities, and so we had received some of the feedback from a couple of them, but I wasn't able to get the other two to give me those numbers in time. But we do have a spreadsheet now to try to keep track of those regularly so it can be part of, you know, more of a regular update accountable.
That would be great. We appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
He?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is the City Airport Committee, ordinance number 966 to establish the Red Lodge Airport Boundary. It's a public hearing, it's the first reading, some changes were made. So who would like to introduce this?
Me. Okay. Me. So ordinance 966 establishing the Red Lodge Airport Boundary. This map hasn't changed since the last time we saw it. And there are, actually, why don't you point it out? So ordinance 966 for number three, it just should read, says survey shall follow the attached map and generally should be out, and that is something that we edited previously and didn't make it to this copy, so that is something we already agreed to, but that I'll add. And this establishes the, so it's just an introduction, but establishes the formal boundary of the airport. It is one, it is the outer boundary, it doesn't establish anything else. And, yeah, let's get to discussion.
So this is a public hearing, and so the public hearing is now open. So if you'd like to make a comment on this issue, again, the meeting on the wall, you can approach the podium, state your name and your address, give your comments to three Now it is time.
It could be three whole minutes, Heather.
Regards to our hobby pilot, I just want to say how much I appreciated you all during COVID and still today. Nothing changes anymore to look up in the sky and see you guys flying, flying down Main Street. And I am sorry if you have received some complaints about that in the past and hopefully you won't in the future. This airport, and I know we're talking about the land and the size of it, and also I just want to talk about, again, these hobby pilots that take care of this airport, that take care of the plowing and the maintenance and making sure everything is functioning for when we do have an incident like we've had before. It's ready for red crap to move in. It's ready for the tankers that we need for gas. It's ready for the helicopters, search and rescue, and so much more that I don't even know what they're called, but they come in here and they save our lives. And because of our location to Yellowstone and the forest that we have surrounding us, we tend to get some really amazing crews that come in very quickly, and our airport is ready for them. Again, it, it, these guys are just, what we're calling hobby pilots, they are amazing. I'd like to see them get their funding that they need for their runway. I would like them to be able to proceed as they have. They have saved us, and I'm talking about now the emergency, the people that come in that is on the ready. Our emergency crews, be it local, federal, they come in and they save our forests, they save us when we have fires, when people are missing, our animals, our homes, and I know I'm missing other things. And they're also there helping us during the flooding. And I don't think we all understand the seriousness of the potential of future flooding. So I do hope that our floodplain administrator is able to get some paperwork completed before the deadline closes, and we already may be too late for that funding, but I hope it can be done.
Thank you, Heather. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Marnie Eccles Bell. I live at 1083 Lady N Street. I would like to comment on the statement of the 17 recreational users. I was a pilot at one time recreationally, but it's disheartening for me to hear sort of the flippant comments because as Heather was talking about the flood, the fire, I also volunteered with first responders and was up there during the flood. And without those people being able to utilize the airport as they did, I mean, we could have been in a lot worse shape. Furthermore, I find it very exciting that some of our high school students are now learning how to fly. Yeah, it may be recreational, but hey, they might have a career in pilot, being a pilot. They could join armed forces and fight for our country. It's important. And just on a personal note, we were able to bring home a hero that was injured fighting a fire for our town, and they flew him in to this airport so that he could get home and rest and recover. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment? Teresa?
If you were first, I'll go. Nobody disputes the value of the airport, and we support it. We supported it while I was on council. We passed another resolution showing that support. We upheld some of the adjustments that were being requested for development that would have made the airport ineligible for FAA grants. We have truly shown and still do support the school. I haven't heard anybody say anything negative about having an airport in Red Lodge. So with that and the boundary dispute at this point, the first hearing of the ordinance that's up there for discussion tonight does not show, as Jen said, the amendments that were last stated. I believe that they also asked, there was an adjustment to that to include, the survey include the extent of the airport, the emergency or tactical reserve area and the higher development area. I didn't see that, so I'm not sure what happened. But I also agree that, or everybody else agrees with me, but I think that the most contentious argument right now for including or excluding the four acres that is not within the fenced area at the airport right now and is unused by the airport should remain in city control and doesn't need to migrate over to the control of the airport. That road up there, South Airport Road and Airport Road, the parking area, whatever improvements might be envisioned for the four acres, that is not a busy road. I mean, it's not a hazard, it's 25 miles the whole stretch of the way. Nobody's speeding up and down there. There's not constant traffic. There's plenty of room to go in and out of the airport. And the only reason the airport hangar parking area was full during the wings and wheels or whatever the event was called, which is a great event, good for the public, was that the parking area was consumed by the old automobiles. So normally that is not a path parking lot, and I don't believe there presents a hazard or need for additional parking unless there's going to be another wings and wheel event. And I would like to see that the four acres of reserve should be used, public use of the residents of Red Lodge.
Thank you, Teresa. Any more comments from?
Jen? I've been sitting in on quite a few meetings and listened to the discussion, and I realized that it is a complicated issue, not simple. But in discussion with some council members, what I've come to for me personally is that I really wish to live in a community or the city and the county, and I realize tonight we're talking about the boundary of the airport, but it's also been contention between city and county. And I really wish to live in a municipality where the city and the county act cooperatively together to best serve, problem solve, and respond to emergencies. So as a citizen, that's what I have to add, is that I hope to see a cooperative relationship between the airport, city, the county, et cetera. And I wish I could say I hadn't flown over 25 miles an hour. But I'll be careful.
Sandy?
Sandy Collins, 307 Hagan Avenue, South. I've heard a lot in the committee meetings about this four acres, and it's worth so much money. Being a real estate broker, land isn't worth anything if it doesn't have sewer and water, and it's right next to an airport. So I don't see the value of the land for any kind of development now or in the future. And I did go to Wings and Wheels, and I was walking down the middle of Airport Road and cars were dodging around me. So I don't believe that, like Jen, who speeds on Airport Road, she's not the only one as well. I just think that if we're talking about public safety, that we really do need a parking area for the airport that isn't on the runway or where they're taxiing their airplanes, to say the least. And I've heard a lot from the mayor tonight on all the negatives of the airport and about the fact that we're having a drier summers and less water, so we're going to have more fires. If we're going to have more fires, we definitely need this airport. It serves a huge purpose here, monstrous purpose. I've also heard a lot during all these discussions about the emergency runway, which doesn't have to have a runway protection zone because it's an emergency. And I did talk to Bo Ewald about not crashing his plane in the proper place, using that emergency runway as he should have, but I think it's there for a reason. The airport guys know what they're talking about, and we need to rely on their expertise. And I'm for the boundary as written, including the four acres. It's my understanding that the committee here and the county and the airport board made some concessions so that they could include that four acres, and that's the way it works, that some people lose, some people win, and in the end you come to a consensus, and that was the consensus that the four acres be included in the boundary. The city has no use for it now, and I can't imagine it using it in the future.
Like you said, anybody else? We're going to have punch cards next time. Steve?
To be short, we've been talking about, it's come up that the land up there is To be short, we've been talking about, it's come up that the land up there is city-owned land, there's no question of that, and it does have some value, has some economic value. There is therefore, I think, some incentive because of that to do something else with some of the airport land. And I would say that keeping, I was going to speak about the northeast quadrant now, not the, not the four acres. But keeping that northeast quadrant within the boundary of the airport will best assure the fact that our emergency services capabilities are not compromised going forward by any outside economic pressures, economic desires, regardless of how important those might be. If, if you value the emergency services area of the airport and what it's contributed to the, to the community, to best assure that that is sustained is to keep that area within the airport boundary. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Anybody online want to speak on this issue? All right, last call for public comment. Public comment is close. Marnie, can we?
(Inaudible). Thank you, but I don't see any can't leave.
Okay. Thank you. So you've heard the comments from everybody who wants to comment. I have a question, though. There was a motion made at the last meeting to have a city, member of the city staff accompany the surveyor. That was voted on and it is not on this document. So needs to be added back on there.
That is true. We had a question as airport council because, or as airport committee for Dennison, actually, because our, it, we were told that it was under his recommendation that we remove the language with staff accompaniment under section one. And it says not the case, then we will put it back in there. If it is the case, we'd like to know why.
Let me correct that because it wasn't his recommendation. It still come up. I want him to, to, to discuss this. So the question was whether that was required or needed to be on there. And so if you want to add it in there, my big concern at this point is trying to get this first reading accomplished. So if we can have Dennison address that, if we add that back in.
Mayor, members of the city council, I don't see a problem with that in there. I don't see a problem in taking that out. Obviously, when anybody's doing a, any type of survey, what usually is done is they have a member represented with them. They prepare the survey, a draft is prepared and presented to the client, which would then review the draft and sign it, and then that gets back to the survey company for finalization. Whether that needs to be in or whether that needs to be out, that's up to you guys. I don't, I am not recommending taking it out. But if it was not in there for whatever reason, it's likely that a city staff member would still accompany the survey being done. But absolutely, I have no qualms about it being in there.
I have one more question while you're standing up there. Say to you another trip up here.
You got me.
So we talked earlier about the said survey shall generally follow the attached map. Taking out that generally, do you feel like that is something that should be done or what are the implications of that?
We can take out generally. I don't have a too big of a problem about that. Because in any type of survey, once again, a survey company is not going to take this and just prepare a survey and get a file with a quick recorder. There is a lot of back and forth where there should be. Every survey company I've ever worked with who's licensed, there's a lot of back and forth of this is what, where we're surveying, this is what we're doing, here's a draft, review it, there's a lot of back and forth. And so the client is actively involved. But yes, we can absolutely take out generally or leave it in.
Okay.
But we can take it out.
We did take it out.
Oh, we did?
We did, and I think it just didn't make it into this version.
Perfect, I like that.
So I'd like to, I'd like to say that I can make a move to add in the accompanying with a person from the city, if that's what everybody wants, to make this go through, and remove generally and have that apply.
I think they both were done as well.
They were. Oh, they were.
So we both. It's more a title.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. And I went back and looked in the minutes that's in the packet for these changes, and so what it would read is just more unclear. Number one would read, "The Red Lodge Airport Boundary is hereby established by a survey that shall be prepared by a licensed survey company with staff accompaniment and shall therefore be recorded at the Carving County Sergeant Recorder." And then number three, "The survey shall follow the attachment."
Okay.
So yeah, so we already both got it.
Okay, good.
So we'll just correct that. There's been several requests from various people about having a traffic study if you're going to include that four acres rather than anecdotal language. I mean, I mean, I, I myself am very familiar with traffic on that road. And I mean, I think the previous council made it so that we could have golf carts up there. Then nobody can go faster than 25, let me tell you, there's not a lot of traffic up there. But I mean, a traffic study would clear that up. And so that's up to you guys, but that request has been made several times.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think, I don't think. I moved to approve ordinance 966, ordinance of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, establishing the Red Lodge Airport Boundary.
I second.
Now we're going to.
So, so that's one of the things that I have in my notes. So what would you like to do about that?
I have some thoughts for discussion on the ordinance and also it pertains to the next item, which is the resolution. I, I feel like the traffic, the request for a traffic study has to do with the intended or the perceived use of that four acres at some point in the future, which is not what we're discussing right now with this ordinance and the interlocal agreement. I do think that that would be a great idea and I think it's best served as this body and commissioners and the public have extensive input into the master plan and its development because it will, that will dictate how things progress. So in my mind, that is a very valid point, but it, it isn't directly related to this ordinance or the, or the resolution that's coming up. And I, I guess I would say to everybody, like, we've been talking about this for a long time. And there comes a point where we're just kind of rehashing, hashing and rehashing philosophical differences, like there's not a lot of new information. We're just, we're just at an impasse and we have different philosophies about, about this ordinance and the airport and the interlocal agreement. I will reiterate my belief that what we are talking about right now is the establishment of a boundary, which this community not having a clear understanding of what constitutes the airport when we talk about the airport is a problem. And it's, it's a problem that extends beyond just, it extends beyond conversations about the development of that city-owned land. It's just a thing that should have been addressed a long time ago and wasn't properly addressed and needs to be addressed. And so that's what this ordinance is doing. It does include four acres because this ordinance was part of a negotiation around an interlocal agreement, which is the next thing on our agenda. And I, in my mind, those things need to be talked about together. And so, you know, my, my position up here is to represent the residents of Red Lodge in their best interest. And sometimes we have disagreements about what's in the best interest of Red Lodge, which is why there's six of us up here. And I guess for me, I'm representing residents who want to live in a city where the city and the county and our community members work together on, on lots of issues, but especially when we're looking at the airport, which is a collective good serving this entire region. It has value to the community. Yes, it sits on city-owned land, but it is important to understand the value of the airport aside from just economics. It's important to preserve the spirit of working together, I think. And the fact that it's city-owned land isn't a reason to just say, "We'll run it ourselves." I also feel like there's a timeliness issue here because this, while this isn't a conversation about the master plan, I wholeheartedly agree we should be reviewing the economic development and updating it, that's going to take a lot of time. And in the meantime, we have a terminated agreement. We have a terminated interlocal agreement and it is the responsibility of this council to address that void and to do that in a timely fashion. And so in the spirit of preserving city, county, community member engagement on issues that affect all of us, and we'll get through the parts of the interlocal agreement where, yes, this was a negotiation, those four acres are the only part that isn't already inside a fence line that people colloquially know as, as the airport boundary. And it is part of that negotiation in order to get some concessions on the interlocal agreement, which we'll get to. Pertaining to the boundary and emergency response, I feel like I'm up here representing the idea that land, having land specifically dedicated to emergency response at the airport is a collective good that should be preserved officially within the boundary, and it is not right now. And that using it for emergency response is not the best use, that its value is actually incalculable to the community for emergency response purposes. It's also the councils are struggling to address that void that was created when the contract was terminated. So we're doing that. Like the joint airport board agreement, which we're going to talk about next, in my mind, is a representation of trying to address that void in cooperation instead of in isolation. And then again, just wanting to reiterate that these two documents don't address development questions. And I wholeheartedly agree and sit on land use and planning committee where we are looking right now to find grants to pay for an updated economic development study. That, that's my view and other people up here have different views and that's okay. But I, we have, we are done collecting new information and it's time to vote.
Well, let's all have one last word on it. And Jim, we'll start with you.
Well, I totally disagree with going to boundary now, the interlocal agreement, the boundary, but the master plan should be on the table to look at when you're setting a boundary. I'm sorry, that master plan should be the first thing on the table. They have one, they've been working on one, they haven't put it up to you yet. I think that's the most important part. What is their plan for the airport? It didn't include any of this and then the emergency service area, all that you can do, but I think the master plan should be first. I think taking all of that property, putting it in airport is doing a negative effect on the economic development of this city. Give you two facts, that airport is not going to create any jobs and it's not going to create any revenue for this city. It's just not going to happen. You put all that land in there, they're going to fire their planes. If there's a fire, helicopters land there, they'd land there anyway. They'd land, believe me, other, I've been around other fires, they find the best spot for them to fight the fire from, but that's, like I said, I think you're doing real negative economy. And it will affect this city for decades, not just right now, for decades. There is no other development property for any other kind of business, and I'm going to tell you what, T-shirt chomps and ice cream shacks are not going to support this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Who else would like to speak? Anybody on the council like to make any comments? Can, can you please quiet in the audience? Thank you. Would anybody else that's in here would like to speak? I'm just saying, you know, I, I, my training in my life is based on, on facts from professionals. And I think that, what is 150 acres up there? The only buildable resource that we have, you know, it's been the subject of other plans that need to be updated. I did, I don't, I don't see the, I don't know why your, what your hurry is, but I think we need to do it the right way. Jim, you've been leading our city for many years, along with our other department heads, and I don't know why you find it proper to ignore them for your vast experience in planning because I don't think anybody up here has any aeronautical experience, any planning experience, any legal experience, or any of the other things that we are very concerned about because it's, I mean, all those things. And I've been saying it for weeks and you guys are bound and determined to do this. So, you know, you get to, you get to do it. So there you are. And if anybody else has a comment, otherwise they're going to move on to the vote. Roll call. So we're not going to have a traffic study and we're going to edit the document to include the changes that were already.
Voted on.
Voted on last time. And this boundary, is it contingent on the joint agreement at all?
No, not, not at this time. The ordinance needs to be reading. The resolution will pass next.
Tonight will be action on the resolution.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's there. All right, roll call. Al?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the joint agreement. Resolution 3637 is open for action and it is the joint airport board agreement. So who would like to introduce this?
So I'm going to introduce it and I'm sure we'll be getting some comments from Jen. And Joe, you have worked very hard with me, along with the committee, to come up with this. So this is a resolution of the Red Lodge City Council to approve the attached joint airport board agreement. So what I would like to do at this time is to, in a way to introduce this, we did not have, I know there was a suggestion to have a draft that had all of the changes. We didn't have, had gone back several times between council at the, at the commissioners and here. So we didn't have a draft that met those requirements. So what I'd like to do is go down and as you're looking at this draft that we've provided, I'm going to name the, or I'm going to call up the things that were changed. And then we also have Dennison here and he's graciously agreed, as Jen had talked about earlier, any of the legal speak in there that's not clear to people, he will come up and he will address your questions and put it in layman's terms if that's necessary. So one thing I wanted, so let me just start out, I have kind of a little laundry list here. The leases that are on exhibit in this document are going to remain in place for now and will be addressed at a later date by the Red Lodge, by Red Lodge and Bridger. And that is because getting this through so that we can move on, move on with this whole process was important, but the leases will be looked at and that should be one of the first things, I think, in 2024 that they should consider looking at. Exhibit part, there was questions on that. That'll be updated to include the Red Lodge Airport Boundary Map once the new boundary is surveyed. And then, so let's look at the content. So one of the things that we talked about doing, currently it's a 3-2-2 split on the airport board, and that's three from the county, two from Red Lodge and two from Bridger. We have changed that to be 2-2-2, so there'll be equal representation from the county, from Red Lodge and from Bridger, and those will be up to each of these respective entities to decide who, who will best serve on that. We also added clarification concerning the airport board duties. Their duties are everything around operation and maintenance of the airport. Their duties are everything around operation and maintenance of the airport only. The other item we looked at was termination of the airport agreement by the city. It will need to be by resolution. No one person can blow up the agreement. This is going to have to be by resolution, which would be the city council. The other thing that was modified, and this is actually some input from the county and the airport board, was the budget reporting dates were updated to better reflect the financial timeline that they, that they become available. And so those are the main areas here that we have updated. And so I want to also make a comment about this process, I've made it before, but it's probably worth mentioning again. The whole reason that the city council took this on was to see if we could have a productive working relationship with the county and with Bridger, to come up with something that worked for everybody, that was a compromise but was workable as a community, because it isn't, it's the Red Lodge Airport, but it serves our entire community. So that was one of the reasons. They've been extremely easy, all of them have been extremely easy to work with, providing input, so I want to thank everybody that was involved in this, right off the top of my head here, to say how much we appreciated that. And so, the next thing is going to be, if we can get this thing passed today, then this will go to the commissioners and Bridger and the airport board to look at this and then either accept it or whatever. So I'm hoping that people will consider everything that went into this. And we don't have any other changes, because one of the things that we were told going into this, and it was understood by all parties, was that, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And for the most part, the 2018 agreement was working, was working for everybody. So what we tried to do to get to, to get to some sort of compromise was to try to change as few things as possible and change the things that we really thought needed to change so that we could do this and the boundary in unison. So I think it's important to remember that.
I have one question. Is this your final draft of that agreement?
Yes.
So they can change nothing, either agree or disagree?
No. This is the final draft that's being presented by the city to the county.
To the airport board.
Right. And so the thing is, is that, again
That's not the county, not the airport board.
It's the county. And so, like I said, you know, what we tried to do is have transparency through this and talk to them to come up with something that we think we're very close, we're very close
Some of the problems that we had was that the airport board leased property, that they weren't entitled to lease for non-aeronautical purposes outside their boundary. So how is that not going to happen again?
Dennison, do you want to come up and address some?
Mayor, Member City Council. I think one of the issues with this joint airport agreement, there's a lot of different directions, that people are, there are a lot of different interests that are at stake. Obviously, the airport bound, airport board itself wants more authority to make decisions within the airport. The county also has their own interest and their own desires, and the city has its own interest and desires on things, and a lot of times, so the way the joint airport board was originally, this agreement was originally written in 2018, it was a, taking into consideration all the different interests and different directions that people are going. So there is things in here that are, I don't want to say opposites from each other, but there is something and stuff in here that benefits one party more than the other, in that way. Going back to the original question that you asked, though, in answering that, how to make it so that the county or the airport board would not be able to lease land within the boundary for non-aeronautical purposes? There was a change made, and once again, this is presented, not me writing this, this is not me saying this is what should happen. This is presenting, taking the 2018 agreement, and then taking what the county wrote back, and then making changes to that, and then getting input from another group, and so there's a lot of different inputs in this. There's no guarantee that if you pass this, the county's going to sign it. On the other hand, they might, I don't know. I think, I think that they're very close, all the parties are very close on what they want, but if that's a good idea or not, that's, that's not a legal question. But one of the changes was made to that exact point on paragraph number four. It originally said, or originally was written, that the airport board would have the authority to lease land for aeronautical purposes or purposes incidental thereto. Legally, that means purposes incidental to airport use. It's very clear, very black and white, there's no, there's no way you can suggest that that language is not black and white. It means you can lease land for aeronautical purposes or purposes that are very contingent or close to aeronautical purposes. I believe the lease that was discussed was for lease for a parking lot to a private entity. I think that lease absolutely violates in terms of the agreement that was in place, but that's a different discussion for another day. But that language was modified to make it so that they can only lease land for aeronautical purposes. Another issue, or another change that was made to address that issue was the location. It is, maybe it's my opinion, I think I'm very sound on my opinion, there is not a single document within the past decades that says this is the boundary of the airport, and this is what we leased, and everybody signed off on that. There's been a lot of gray area in that effect, and I believe we've already talked about that earlier today. And so giving a direct boundary of what the airport board will be in charge of will be important. There is a large disagreement of what was included within the boundary, what was not included with the boundary before. So having a very clear definition of what the boundary of the airport is will be important.
Dennison, can we go back to your statements about aeronautical use? Because I see that they may only lease for aeronautical purposes for whatever is pursuant to the master plan, but that's, it doesn't say that they can't lease the rest for non-aeronautical purposes. As far as I can tell, maybe I'm
Oh, you're good. Mayor, Member City Council, on paragraph four, once again, I'm not advocating for this language, this is very, there's two types of issues. The first issue is public, public policy. Which public policy was best for the city of Red Lodge, which language is best? That's not in my office, that's between you guys to develop. But in my office, what's legal? And the idea of what can they use the land for in the airport, within the airport boundary, is the, the language incidental thereto was taken out. So the original language is said for aeronautical purposes, and I believe the original sentence says, you know, the joint airport board may lease space, area improvements, grant concessions on airports, for aeronautical purposes, for purposes incidental thereto. When the airport board said, when they made said lease for, to a private entity for parking, their justification was that was incidental to aeronautical purposes. That's very, that's very attenuated, that's very far-fetched, but that was their hook, or that's what they said. That, so that's the reason the incidental thereto was taken out, and so now it just reads that they can may only lease land for aeronautical purposes.
But that's, I mean, I guess it doesn't, it says that they may only lease space for aeronautical purposes, or so it's the master plan, it doesn't say the whole area? It's only for whatever's in the master plan that hasn't been completed yet? So, I mean, is the intent of council to, or the airport people to allow for other uses with the airport, or is it the intent to keep it to aeronautical uses?
The intent was to write it so that it was aeronautical purposes, and as I read the, maybe it's just the placement of a comma, but it says, however, the joint airport may only lease space, area improvements, grant concessions on airports, on airports for aeronautical purposes, comma, and building construct facilities pursuant to the master plan. So that's how I read it, if it needs to be more clear, like, if there needs to be a period there, then that's fine, but the intent was, as you're saying there, that to close that loophole so that the interpretation couldn't be such that they would use, that they would justify, like, the one they did last year.
I would cross off the word however. That would make it just more clear.
The joint airport board may only lease space, blah, blah, and leave the rest the same. Okay. Dennison, you think that helped? You know, are you okay with that? Will you go lead?
Oh, that sounds right. And I like the idea of putting a period instead of a comma, after purposes, and then capitalizing buildings, construct facilities pursuant to the airport board, I'm sorry, pursuant to the master plan.
You're adding a period after purposes?
And then crossing out and, and then capitalizing bill.
That doesn't make sense, buildings, construct facilities pursuant to, that's a partial sentence, it's not a provision.
Yeah, maybe put a
You can't do that as an English teacher.
Can I call in?
It's a separate thing that they can do. So you put a semicolon there, otherwise you have to say, the airport board may also do.
The joint board may only lease space, area or improvements, grant concessions on airports for aeronautical purposes and building construct facilities. That's not a
Yeah. Maybe just aeronautical purposes, period. The airport board
The joint board may
Oh, yeah.
Build and construct facilities pursuant to the master plan, subject to the provisions of
Perfect.
As long as it's all covered under the aeronautical purposes. Yeah. Great. So is that, are you done? Because I have one question.
No, I can
Do you have more questions for Dennison?
Be done or not?
I do. Dennison, I mean, in, in the agreement, in the lease, there's an indemnification clause for the, when they're leasing out the hangar space, to carry liability insurance for the airport. Where can we put that in our joint airport agreement to indemnize the city of Red Lodge as well, to be listed as an additional? Would you put it after, like, number eight, after eight, before termination? Is put an indemnification clause in there? I mean, all we're going to do is request that it will be listed as an additional on the airport or the policy.
Oh, members, or mayor, Member City Council, I think that's a fantastic idea. I would put it in probably number five.
Number five?
Because it's not going to be termination, because
Okay.
At the very end, you can just add in, since it's not just our city, it's talking about, the joint airport agreement talks about, you know, this city as well as Bridger.
Right, and the county, I mean, they all three would want to be listed
Yeah.
And indemnized by the
The airport board shall list the respective municipalities and county as an
Additional
Additional insured on all, not just as an additional insured.
And provide notice of such to each municipality?
They will, if you're listed on the policy, you automatically get it.
Airport board shall
I have it
It's
You're not listed on there right now, that's why you haven't gotten one. If you're listed on the policy as an additional insured, the insurance company will mail it to you.
The airport board shall list the respective municipalities and county, and carbon, county has an additional insured on all insurance?
Yes.
Has an additional insured.
Yes.
Yeah.
Indemnified, yeah.
Do you have anything more?
So, I have One thing, which is just, so in, in doing this for multiple months, one of the things that I wanted to have you explain in layman's terms is for, number four powers of the board, because there's language here that has to be here, because a joint airport board is defined in Montana code and annotated. However, it's been edited, and you brought up one of those edits, which is the leases have contained, have a container now, and they didn't before. We also talked about making sure that development decisions were not solely made by this board anymore, and can you speak to the changes that we made here to ensure that that is protected?
Absolutely. Mayor, Member City Council. And I think this goes back to what I was saying previously, how there is a push and pull between the different organizations on what they would like to see and how this is run. Obviously, the joint airport board, I would assume, obviously, I don't represent them, I would assume that they would like more authority to make decisions on everything that happens within that airport. On the other hand, on the other hand, is the Red Lodge would like authority to also have a say in that, in the development. I would go to, so there's kind of that pull between the two. On the first part of this, paragraph four, it talks about all the authority that the joint airport board would have, which would, they would have, all the authority concerning the operation, the maintenance, the running of the airport. I would say that probably about halfway through, it talks about the limitations on that large grant of power. And the limitations would be, yeah, the rules and regulations may be proposed by the joint board, that shall be enacted only by the municipalities and counties, as prescribed by Montana codes. Then it talks about no real property, acquired shall be disposed by the airport board except by lease. Then it talks about only for aeronautical purposes, then it talks about how it could only be leased according to the master plan. I will bring up one thing that Teresa Wispert brought up, I thought was very good, and it's a fantastic example. One thing that this joint agreement does not say, it does not say that any development up there has to go through the, the planning board, doesn't say that. It says that within the boundary of the airport, the airport board would have the authority to develop it, to see how it should be developed in conjunction with creating a master plan, all development would be done according to the master plan, and the master plan could be changed with the municipal, with the respective municipalities' approval. But it doesn't say that any development would have to go through the air, I'm sorry, the planning board. And so the city absolutely could, I mean, it's very easy to write, it's very easy to write if the city would like, if the city council would like to make it so that all development up there goes through the, the planning board. That's easy to put in there, but it's not in there right now, because it gives that authority to make kind of those decisions right now with the joint airport board in conjunction with the master plan. And so it could be written, I mean, it can be written any way you guys want, as long as the county agrees to it, but that's how it's written.
So is that something that you wanted to add?
I just will comment briefly on this. The master plan, currently, there is a subdivision document that they have to follow that's already been approved by, that's gone through the process, and any changes to that do have to currently go through the planning board and through us. And then when the master plan happens, that will be the new guiding document for development up there, and we have to approve that. So if there's any changes to that choice of where things are going, we'll have to approve it.
According
So I'm good with that.
Do you have a clarification?
No changes to development of the current area, so when they would like to build a hangar that's outside of what's currently subdivided up there, they just get a new certificate of survey, and that certificate comes through the city and the planning department and the mayor review and sign off. And it's been just a, one by one, kind of changed. The goal with the master plan, and I've talked with Steve Smith about this, you know, what we would like to see is that they don't have to go through a certificate of survey every time they'd like to build a hangar, that what is in the master plan or what the development is going to be is what they are held to. the development is going to be, is what they are held to. And then, yes, anything outside of that needs, should go through either planning review and/or planning board review, especially if there's not a plan for those four acres, that should be reviewed further by planning board. But currently, they don't have to go to planning board for any development up there, and I think what's being proposed actually does add, I think, eight more units to what is currently subdivided, subdivided up there.
And my understanding was, if, if they went outside of those plotted areas or changed any of those boundaries, then it had to go back, because we approved that one hangar because they had to move the line of some plots up there in order to accommodate the larger hangar. And, and the council approved that.
When was that one?
Right when I got on the board, that's one Teresa was talking about, when she said that we approved a change to the plot that landed up there.
You moved to the boundary.
The boundary.
Survey didn't give them another bunch of land for that.
No, it was, it was, we, it, it.
Lot line adjustment.
It was just a lot line adjustment, is what it was. I mean, it was not giving them any more land, it was just a lot line adjustment.
No, I, no, that was, they just, they moved, they changed the lot line, so they, they've changed that, the plot up there, and since I've been here in the 25 years, probably four or five times. They come and then they want to change the plots, we're going to build hangars this way, they're going to, so like I said, I, that's why I believe, what really needs to be done is the master plan, so they, this is where we're going to have hangars, this is where we're going to have the mechanic shop. This, this master plan should be the first thing up in front of us, not the last thing. Piece-mealed in, in the future, and that's what you'll have, it will be piece-mealed in. You'll never see a complete master plan, because they're going to want to change, or change, and change.
We just added this, yeah, go ahead.
I think that'd be very clear, changes currently under this agreement would have to go through the planning board for review.
But it does say building construct facilities pursuant to the master plan, subject to the provisions of Montana Code, section sixty seven, ten, two oh five.
According to the master plan, yeah.
And so, and, and when we, I just wanted to clarify, like, way back when we started, we asked you specifically, hey, we want this document to reflect that the city has concerns about the airport board making decisions about city-owned land without city input. And do you think that the language that we've put in here accurately does that? That was, that was one of the major things that we.
I would say it depends on, I would say yes. But there's different degrees of how much you want to put it in concrete, if that makes sense. What I say yes to is, the language in here says very clearly that the master plan will be developed, all development on, in the airport will have to be pursuant to the master plan, and the city has to approve the master plan and make, and approve changes to the master plan. Very clear. So if anybody wants to make changes up there, they have to come back to the city, the master plan will be developed, the master plan cannot be approved without, I mean, the master plan will be approved by the city. So the city does have the final say. By leaving it up to the master plan, I would say logistically, not legally, logistically, it's a lot easier to change. We discussed here today, a master plan can be altered. Some of the, those alterations, and Courtney's talked about that, can be altered, not going through a city council, not going through planning board, things like that, there's changes that could be made. Logistically, it's a lot easier to make those changes. There's ways you could do it to make it more concrete. What I mean by that, it doesn't change the city's authority, it just makes it more lasting, so the decisions that are made today, it would be harder to change. And there's things that, I mean, to give you a very definite example, I mean, what I'm saying is kind of more vague, but giving you an exact, exact example, for example, there was some discussion about having a surveyed area within the airport boundary and saying, you know, that only within this surveyed area can buildings be prepared. That is, that would just logistically make it a lot harder to change in the future, for good or bad. You guys have to make that decision. The way the language now reads is, we're going to leave it up to the master plan, and we're going to amend the master plan. Once again, it still gives the authority to the city, master plans logistically is a lot easier to amend than doing a whole new survey and getting a survey approval by all parties, getting changes to that. So there's things, so that's a good concrete example, there's things you could do to make it more concrete, what you do today cannot be changed. Leaving it up to the master plan does create flexibility for the airport and the airport board and members there. And it creates flexibility for the city in the future, city council members and city staff, if they want to make changes to it. But once again, I mean, there's trade-offs. One's not legally better than the other, it's just, so that's going to be a decision you guys have to make, whether, which direction you want to go. I don't know, does that answer it?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And so, we, we, earlier we had no development on the northeast quadrant, and that's why the purpose of having it surveyed, but now that it's all one survey, we've lost that flexibility with determining where we'll develop that property.
It'll be part of the master plan, of what, of what can be developed and what can't.
And that brings to my next question, the, the community hasn't been part of, I mean, from the beginning, we've been promised that the community would be a part of the process. It's part of the slide presentation from the engineering company, and it's, I, I've provided in the packet, the FAA recommendation that the community should have a significant role in development of airports, especially when they're right in the middle of town. And so, I guess, how's that going to happen? Because I'm not seeing any, any efforts to involve the community. And I, I would like to know how the airport committee, excuse me, Sandy, please, I didn't say anything. Is there any proposals from the airport committee to have the community start being able to be involved? Is, is that been a topic of your discussions at all?
Yes, and as part of the rollout of the master plan, when we start looking at that, it's going to be in 2024, I will not be here, but I know other people here that are going to be taking my place are very dedicated to making sure that we have community input. So it's my hope that there'll be, there'll be forums or opportunities for people to, to present, Lance can present what's being, what's going to be there, there can be discussion, and there will be input from the community. This master plan, I don't, I mean, there was never any intention of that being done in a vacuum. And so that has been the, that has been the whole thing, is once we get the boundary, then we can go, and we get the boundary set up, they can start looking for their FAA funding, and then the whole idea of what happens in that master plan will involve the city, will involve all the community.
The, the plan has been being worked on for a year and a half, and the community has not been part of any of that. And the promise has been made several times that the community would be a significant voice in that, and it hasn't happened. And it didn't say that we would wait until it was done, it said we would be part of it from the beginning. And so, I guess, I just want to, I mean, we're not, right now, part of it. And so I want to, I want, I want to make sure that that changes, and so I would like to know how you are providing that that will change.
Well, I would say that, you know, I think some of us weren't brought into this process until it became critical, so I don't really know. But I know we have our mayor, our next mayor in 2024, Dave Westwood here. And Dave, would you make a pledge to everybody here that we, you are going to make sure that the city is going to get input from the public on the master plan? Or at least give them an opportunity, do you understand?
Let me take my comments carefully. This ain't my circus, this ain't my monkeys. And, and what I mean by that is I'm staying out of it. I want you guys to have your discussion as council members, and mayor, and all work together. And on January one will be me to come, up to me to come in and assess what situation I've been handed, but I think it's probably not only unfair but inappropriate for me to comment on anything beyond that right now. So out of respect to the current administration and the current council, have at it, guys.
Okay, well, that, let me just say, that's going to happen on the next administration's watch. So we have Jody, we have Sinta here, you're not sworn in yet, so sorry, you and Sandy. So would you guys like to say what you think you're going to do, or that you'll be behind making sure that the public's aware of what's happening and have input?
The master plan, the way that I understand it is that it will be, there will be public hearings on the master plan. And during those public hearings, council, at that time, can move to make changes to it based on that public input.
But, no, and that's the, the problem, is, is the, the promise was made that we would be included extensively the whole way, not just when it's done. And, and that, that's in the presentation that they made, two times, there's a whole slide about. And it, and it's also in line with the FAA, it's the whole way, it's not the end of.
We have not been involved in the master plan as committee members.
Correct.
So I, I cannot address that. I, I mean, Lance is very knowledgeable, he, he knows the process. I would hope that that would, you know, that, that there would be public input. I, you know, if he says there's going to be public input, I would hope that there's public input. But we were not told to look at the master plan in this process. That's not what the goal of our committee was.
It's also the case that the airport board has not put forward a draft for public input or, or for the city to review yet.
Well, that's right.
It is in process, and I, I would say, from land use and planning's perspective, we, we absolutely took the mayor's recommendation for updating the said document and are actively pursuing funding to do that, and anticipate that that can and should be part of a master plan discussion for this community. And, you know, I also am leaving in December, but I will be on those seats to argue that our community needs extensive input in that document, as we would for any document that is going to guide the development of city-owned resources for the long term, the same way we do for the revitalization plan, which is now not the revitalization plan, it is the downtown master.
Okay.
Yeah, the downtown master plan. And, and all the, and all of those. And so it'll be up to residents to demand that the city not pass that document without their input and participate, and it will be up to the six city council members who are up here when it comes up for a draft to ensure that that has happened.
It, it, you know, it goes back to, that's the language that you selected to use in the joint agreement, and it goes back to Jim's point, that you're putting the cart before the horse on this, because there is no master plan, and there's no assurances of, of how that's going to go, and that's like what this entire document depends upon, and there isn't one. So I guess, I, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me as far as a functioning document.
I would, I would like, we have not done this yet, we probably should have done it at the very beginning, I would like to move to approve resolution thirty-six, thirty-seven, resolution through the joint airport board agreement with the changes that were discussed.
I'll second.
I never want to be in the position of interrupting you guys, obviously, it's your guys' need. The one thing I would respectfully request is on page four, number ten, there is two changes. If we can change the second one instead of distribution of airport property, distribution of said property, grammatically, it will make me feel a lot better, sleep better at night. It doesn't change the meaning.
Number, I'm sorry, what was?
Ten, four.
Ten, on page four. I apologize.
Okay. So instead of distribution of airport property, you want to do what?
Not the first one, just the second one, distribution of said property.
Said, the distribution of the property.
Yeah, and because I've already talked about distribution of airport property.
Sorry, I amend my motion then, to include that change.
I'm so sorry.
Second.
If there's, what is number ten supposed to say? Disposition O after termination?
Of, probably.
Now, it's supposed to say disposition after termination, that's the right order.
Can I ask this one question? Re-ask my question, I asked, was this a final document, a final draft? And here you are, making changes, making changes, this is not a final draft. I don't think you should be ready to vote on something you're setting here, making changes on every time it comes up. Put it together, make a final draft without change, and make sure the legal part is all there, all this. You, it's not a, you're going to make a vote, did everyone write down those changes that happened today?
We have, it's also being recorded, yeah.
Okay, but like I said, you're going to vote on it tonight.
Right.
So you passed, that's it. You're passing something you might not all understand exactly what changes you just made.
I second it.
Oco. O? Yes. Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keith?
No.
Um, yes. All right? Thank you all for hanging in there late night, if there's correspondence, it's in your packet, and with that, we'll adjourn.